Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the April 20th, 2016 City Council Meeting. At this time, could I please have Jesse Reynoso come forward from the Word of Life for the opening prayer?
Bow our heads and close our eyes. Thank you, God, for this opportunity, Lord. We ask, Lord, I ask, Lord, God, that you would bless the mayor of Los Banos and the city council members and the staff that he has, Lord, that you would bless them with wisdom and understanding, that they would be able to make the right, Lord God, decisions on the agendas tonight, Lord, that you would protect them and watch over them and keep them safe, Lord. I also want to pray, Lord God, for the, for the fire department and for EMTs and for police department, that you would keep them safe. We pray for the city of Los Banos, that you would prosper it, that you would keep it safe also, and that you would continue to lead the leaders of this city to, to help this city to grow and to be safe. We thank you for this opportunity. We give you the glory and the honor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call for order the City Council Meeting of April 20th, 2016. And Chief Hayden, would you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Director Maloney.
Faria Louis. Silveira.
Present.
Stonegrove. Valalta.
And, uh, member Faria, City Councilman Faria is absent this evening because he has a band concert, so something conflicting, so he is, uh, he is excused. Okay, let's go on to, we do have a quorum, let's go on to item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mr. Silveira.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Ms. Stonegrove?
Second.
Second by Silveira, uh, first, excuse me, motion by Silveira, second by Stonegrove to approve the agenda stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item five, presentations, proclamation recognizing sexual assault awareness month. And tonight, we have two representatives to receive the proclamation. If you'd like to give your name and your title, please.
Chief Program Director for Valley Crisis Center. Raina Nunez, program coordinator.
Thank you both for being here. Proclamation declaring the month of April as sexual assault awareness month and April 27th, 2016 as denim day in Las Vanos. Whereas, not Jeff Denham, I mean, something else, right? Okay. Whereas, the month of April has been declared sexual assault awareness month by the White House, the United States Congress, and the state governments throughout the nation, including California. And sexual violence is a devastating, violent, intolerable crime that affects men, women, seniors, teens, children of all ages, cultures, economic situations, and abilities. The statistics show that one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. During their time in college on campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted. No one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault alone. We must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. The Fourth Wednesday in April is observed around the world as denim day, a single day of awareness created to remember a rape conviction that was overturned on appeal simply because the victim wore tight jeans. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of Las Vanos, who hereby proclaims the month of April 2016 as sexual assault awareness month in Merced County, and proclaims April 27th as denim day in order to support sexual assault prevention awareness efforts throughout our country. I'd like to present you with this proclamation, and would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me here. On behalf of the Board of the Alliance, our advocates from Valley Crisis Center, our volunteers, and myself, we thank you. And we also have a really big announcement to make as well.
Um, we are very excited to, um, with the support of the Los Banos Police Department and Seroptrum International of Los Banos, we are going to be able to provide services for victims of domestic violence and sexual abuse five days a week here at our Los Banos office. So this is a huge, huge milestone for us. We've been working very hard to get here to provide services on the west side. So we're excited about that.
Any address of the office?
Um, 545 J Street. We're right across the street where the Powell office is. If you, you know, know anybody who may need services, please contact us. And, uh, there's information at the police department and there's our phone numbers are listed on the wall there for everybody to see. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation, and detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. At this time, is there anyone who would like to speak at the public forum? But before you come up, if you have cell phones, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Yes.
Good evening, council people. Uh, I'm Rick Scannell, I'm the, uh, Las Vanos American Legion Post 166 Chairman of the Boy State Program. Tonight, we have with us Commander, Acting Commander Alan Cotta, who, uh, American Legion Post 166, and Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 2487 Commander Mike Hughes. Uh, and we're here tonight to introduce our candidates to Boy State this year. Sixty-second rundown, Boy State is a program started in 1935 by the American Legion to kind of counter the youth programs of the socialist and fascist movements in Europe. Uh, it's been going on every year since then. What, it, it involves picking a high school senior, junior, from each of our high schools and an alternate, just in case one of them can't make it. We send them to Sacramento for a week in, uh, June, and they live in, there's four dorms that are five stories apiece. Uh, they, each floor forms a city, each dorm is a county, and all four dorms are a state. And they elect government representatives, city representatives, you know, on their floor, county supervisors, police enforcement, judges, and all that. They're, uh, the goal is to teach them Americanism, flag respect, etiquette, and, uh, um, and history. And it also, the goal is also to teach them the duties, responsibilities, privileges, and, um, duties, responsibilities, I've memorized this 10 times and I always miss one. The responsibilities, duties, privileges, and rights of a franchise citizen. So without further ado, let me introduce our candidates this year. Every year, they get better, okay? And this year didn't disappoint us at all. Then I'll have Mike say something and Alan say something, but our, our candidate this year from Las Vanos High School is, um, Giovanni Mevi. Could you please stand up Giovanni? From Las Vanos. Our candidate from Pacheco High School is Juan Ramos. And our, no, I, I'm giving him a hard time. He didn't show up at the school board meeting. And our alternate for both schools, should one of them not be able to make it, is Armani Arzon. I mean, Arzon Kermani. Outstanding candidates, all. Uh, we're proud to have them represent our post. The schools are proud to have them representing their schools, and the city should be proud to have them representing our city. A good group of people going up there, and every year we do it, and every year they get better. So if you guys would like to say something?
Just real quick, uh, I'd like to thank the city council for allowing us to present our candidates. And like Rick said, every year it gets tougher, the kids keep getting smarter on us, which is good for our school system, so with that, I'd like to see that keep on. Mike?
I'd like to echo the same things about the, about the candidates. They just, uh, they, they keep getting better and better, and, uh, it's a sign of what we're producing here in Las Vanos, which is really, really wonderful. And a one other side note, tomorrow at the Veterans Hall on, uh, on E Street, we're having a Las Vanos Veterans Stand Down to bring onsite resources available for any veterans that are looking for help. We have mental health screening, uh, veterans representatives, the Mobile Vet Center, which comes here twice a month, and support services from the county veterans office. So we'll have a lot of stuff there, and we're going to have a tri-tip lunch, so, uh, anybody that, uh, that wants to come by and see what we're doing for our veterans, or any veterans that want to come by, we'll make that available to them, and there's no charge.
What time?
It is between nine and two o'clock. And, you know, Scotty, you could probably come about lunchtime, because you look like you've missed a meal.
I don't miss too many meals. I just work really hard.
But thank you all, and, uh, and we'd like to see as many of you want to come by and see what we're doing, because I, we're real proud of the services that we brought to Las Vanos for our veterans.
Thank you. You want to introduce the other group?
Also, um, the, the American Legion Auxiliary is, uh, the sponsors for the Girl State, which is a, another program that's just like Boy State, only it's for the girls. And we have the representatives from the Auxiliary that will come up and, uh, take care of that. Nancy?
My name is Nancy Williamson, and I am here with Mary Ann Paradiso and Mary Bosch, and we were on the committee for Girl State. We did the interviews, which was awesome. Stephanie Bayard is our chairman, and she was not able to attend today, so she, this evening, so she sent me, and I'm gonna, this is really hard. Okay, so, um, she sent some information with me, and, um, I'd like to just read this little couple paragraphs. It says, "We are from the James V. Pranetti Unit 166 American Legion Auxiliary here in Las Vanos, and I would like to tell you about Girl State. It is a program for girls, um, teaching how government works while developing leadership skills. As a participant in the program, our delegates will run for office, create and enforce laws, and actively participate in all phases of creating and running a working government. Our delegates will attend a week-long conference at Clermont McKenna College, which is about 15 miles from Los Angeles, from June the 27th to July the 2nd. We who did the interviews went to the Las Vanos High School and the, and Pacheco High School, and we were able to choose, um, or to select delegates and alternates from both schools. So at this time, I would like to introduce you to our delegates and alternates, and probably they'll say their parents' names. From Las Vanos High School, we have Kiara Gilardi, and her parents are Bill and Nancy Our first alternate is Marcela Garcia, and her parents are Rigoberto and Sylvia Garcia. Our second alternate is Caitlin Downward, and her parents are Brian and Jennifer Downward. And from Pacheco High School, we have Cassandra Ramirez, at the end, right there, and her parents are Gabriel and Lizbeth. Our first alternate is Danielle Miyamoto, and her parents are Steven and Catherine We are so proud of these amazing girls, and we'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to introduce them, um, your 2016 Girl State delegates and alternates. Thank you.
Well, first off, I, I'm sure the total council would say that we are so happy that you are providing this type of service for young people in Las Vanos. It is so important to teach people leadership, to, to teach students leadership, and to teach some respect for our flag and the Constitution. It's kind of lost today. And so you are keeping the dream alive. Thank you so much for what you do. Please continue, and I'm glad it's tough for you. I'm glad it's tough that, that, that you have to go through such a vetting process to pick students, because that means there are a tremendous amount of students at both high schools that deserve this honor. And it's absolutely wonderful, again, that you provide this service. Thank you to all the veterans, thank you to the auxiliary for all the time that you put in. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us and your time. We'll promise we'll make this real brief. My name's John Smikowski, and right here next to me is Anne Marie White, and we're both members of the Las Vanos High School, uh, at Las Vanos High School, and we're also enrolled in, uh, the Las Vanos High School Band. Um, I've been involved with band and music since I've been in fifth grade, and I've grown to love music very much since then. And, uh, here at Las Vanos High School, Anne Marie and I can both, you know, vouch for that, that we do some pretty amazing things here. We, we participate in local football games, we, we perform field shows during halftime, we provide pet music during the football games and basketball games during the winter season. Uh, we, we participate in local parades. The May Day Parade that's coming up real soon will be in that, playing the Billboard March, quite an exciting piece right there. And, uh, we also perform several concerts throughout the year for anyone who would like to come and listen, they're, they're really exciting, real fun time. But, uh, one of our most anticipated events of the year is coming up real soon. It's our annual, um, Las Vanos High School Band Silent Auction, and this is a real fun event where, um, guests are treated to a really nice meal. It's, I believe it's apricot chicken with cooked green beans and rice, and, um, there'll be live entertainment from our Las Vanos High School Jazz Band. I'm, I'm also a part of that. And, um, as well as you'll be able to participate in a silent auction, uh, while being fed and entertained like that. Students like myself and Anne Marie will be serving you guys, making sure that you're happy and enjoying yourself, uh, that drinks are always filled, napkins are replaced and stuff. It's, it's a real fun event, and I'm here tonight to invite all of you and all of you to come and attend. Um, it's something that, uh, everyone looks forward to, it's, it's really fun, and the support from you guys is what really makes this program possible in, in keeping us, you know, doing what we do and what we love and stuff. And the event is actually Saturday, May 7th. Doors open at 4:30, and dinner actually starts at 6:00. It's $20 per person if any of you are interested. Um, if you can't make it or anything, you guys are also welcome to donate any items or, or funds or whatever, you know, any and all donations are sincerely appreciated. Like I said, it's what keeps this program going, and, uh, we really appreciate your guys' support. Um, if you have any more questions, our band director is right over there. You guys are welcome to talk to him afterwards or whatnot. Sorry for putting you on the spot. But, um, but I, I really thank you guys for hearing me out, and I hope to see you all there. It's going to be a great, great time. Thank you.
Could you leave a poster with the, uh, leave the city clerk, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm sorry. This is only a fraction of the representation from our high school, both high schools that are, that produce excellent, excellent students to go on to careers, professional careers in, in Las Vanos. And if you ever looked up the, the status of all the people that graduated from Las Vanos High School and now Pacheco, you're going to see an impressive list of students, men and women, who furthered, far furthered their careers than you would ever expect from a small town. So this is just a small indication of the large population of wonderful students that we have in our school system. So thank you for coming here tonight and representing your school well. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? The trash guy. Okay.
You know I'm always talking trash, Mike. Come on, you know I'm always talking trash. Eric Lamold, resident.
Yeah, explain who you are.
Eric Lamold, resident of Las Vanos, employee of Republic Services. I'm the, the recycling guru. All right, so, hi, how are you? Oh, that's Mike's clap. So the, I just want to give kudos off the bat to our, one of our driver, the guy that did the opening prayer, he's, uh, he's a driver of ours, so I was really impressed by him tonight, so it was really good to see him do that. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I missed last meeting, and, uh, I felt like I missed a family member, I really did, because I hate to miss them, and, uh, but thank God for YouTube. Rick, thank you. Rick back there, the IT guy. Um, so anyhow, uh, over the weekend, we had a very successful cleanup the, the last Saturday, the 16th. It was a ginormous event. I know that's not a word, right? Mrs. Stonegrove. But, um, uh, people disposing of their unwanted items, habitat for humanity, and, and salvation armory were in hand to collect donated clothing, furniture, and appliances to help those less fortunate. Uh, there were a lot of loads and loads of refugees coming in all day with no breaks in between. Um, I met with their residents and asked them if there were any issues with their service and how we could, how we could have been more accommodating to them. Um, and I'm delighted to say there was, there were no negative comments, so I'm, I'm probably just saying that because I'm, I was there present, I'm sure they would say something. I went back, that's one thing. So, I'm being honest. So I did preach about the importance of recycling, what a positive impact it would be for our city. Uh, nonetheless, the most important reason for the event is to eliminate illegal dumping onto our public streets, empty lots and alleyways. Uh, this can be a huge problem in, in other municipalities. Uh, this leads me to, to how many tons we collected. I know you guys are waiting that in suspense. Drum roll. Ready? Uh, total refugees collected garbage, if nobody knows what refugees is, is garbage. 134.29 tons, that's quite a bit. Uh, metal collected 12.20 tons, brush ring waste 1.69 tons, which leads me, people are doing their public works, people are not watering, so, um, that's a good thing. So we're not, we didn't have that much to collect. Uh, total tires collected, this, 420 tires. That's quite a bit. It's quite a bit. You guys are, I mean, it's anyhow. So free brainiacs, and, and if there's any engineers in here, I know Mark's an engineer, that's 296,000 pounds collected at this event. Uh, these are, these totals are a 10-year high. Uh, this tells me that, that advertising does work, that what we've done. Um, and we have more residents occupying homes that were, that were once victims of the housing market crash. So I, I hope you enjoyed my trash talking tonight. You guys have a great night.
Tell me, Eric, how is this sponsored? Go over, how did this vent come about?
I'm not sure, to be honest with you. All I know is, I coordinate the event, I make it happen, I pay quite a bit for the, oh, I said, I.
So it's through Republic Services and the city, then?
Right, it's a co-op effort between Republic Services and the city of Las Vanos, so.
Okay.
Trying to incorporate some better ideas.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Um, my name is Iver Urias. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I had talked, spoke with you before, um, and also with, uh, Mr. Hayden. Um, my daughter and I were victims of an assault back in Mar, on March 12th. My daughter and I were victims of an assault back on March 12th and we have not been given much justice. I feel that the assaultants are getting away with it and that there's really not much that anybody is doing to help us out and we are the victims. I see our city attorney is here and I would urge for you guys to look a little further into our case, being that the district attorney already said they're not picking up the case. And I don't want to go into any details as of now, it's pretty public as we speak. However, I would ask the city to please look into it. We are the victims and we have not been served the correct justice that we deserve and these people are roaming around free when they've committed a crime. And that's pretty much what I want to say and, do you have anything to say, Ma? So, I would ask the city council, chief of police, who I spoke with today, to please look into it a little further, instead of just shunning us off like we have done something wrong. We did absolutely nothing wrong in this case and we are actually treated as the people that have done something wrong. Thank you for your time.
Just a quick response, I have been in email contact with you through, over the last couple of days and tried calling you again today. Yes, yes, our police chief has, is looking into this and he is at your disposal. I understand that you spoke with him today. So, I can tell you and I can assure you that the department is not putting anything aside and everything will be done in proper procedure, everything will be investigated the way it should or it has been. And if there's anything else that the chief needs to do, he will do. But I have to tell you that even after the report, it goes to the district attorney and that is Merced County. And so, Merced County has the final say. I just want to let.
I just want everybody to know that this is just put aside.
Okay, it's not being put aside by us. That's what I want to tell you. Okay, thank you. Okay. I usually don't respond, but I just want you to know that it won't be put aside, okay, by us. Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, bring it back to council level and we'll go on to item seven. Consideration of Approval and Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight we have, Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 158701 through 158937 in the amount of $1,182,419.92. Third quarter investment report for fiscal year 2015-2016. City Council Resolution Number 5742, awarding contract for legal advertising to the Los Banos Enterprise for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute agreement. City Council Resolution Number 5743, approving and authorizing the interim city manager to execute a professional services agreement for banking services. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now ask for a motion. Mr. Silveira?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mr. Stonegrove?
Second.
Motion by Silveira, second by Stonegrove to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to item number eight, advisement of public notices, three reports. Senior Planner Elm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So, we have three reports tonight. The first one is a vesting tentative tract map and final development plan that will be considered by the Planning Commission. This is for South Point at Regency Park. They're proposing 510 single-family residential lots within a development that was previously known as the Provinces. The second item is a mobile vendor permit and this would be for push carts in the public right-of-way throughout the city of Los Banos. And the third item is site plan review and a conditional use permit for Windexer Convenience Store and Fuel Station. They're proposing to be located on the northwest corner of Ward Road and Highway 152, Pacheco Boulevard. They're proposing a 4,728 square foot convenience store, 16-pump fuel station and self-serve automatic car wash on 1.2 acres. And then in addition, it's not a public hearing, but we will have a design review that night for Save Mart and this would be located in the old Kmart building at 1400 South Mercy Springs Road. And that will be Wednesday, April 27th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Okay, council members, any questions? All right, thank you. Stacy? Okay, let's go on to item number nine, city manager's report. City Manager Breezy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Just one item to bring up tonight. For the first four months of this year, it's exciting news to report anytime we experience any growth in town and for the time period of January 1st to about April 18th, we have seen about 85 new housing permits be pulled with economic development. So, I think the number was in the 130s last year for the entire year and we're at 85 now. That's an encouraging sign and I think that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go on to item number 10, city council member reports. Tonight we'll start with Mr. Silveira.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have just only a couple of things for tonight. The first thing is, in partnership with the Los Banos PD and the district attorney's office, there is, it's got drugs, turn-in your unused or expired medication for safe disposal and that'll be this Saturday, or next Saturday, April 30th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Los Banos Police Annex, right here on J Street across from the city hall. So, if you have any unused or expired prescription medication, this is your time to be able to get rid of that safely. And again, it's in partnership with Los Banos PD and the DA's office. And it's at the, from 10:00 to 2:00 on the 30th at the Los Banos Police Annex. The other thing is, May Day will be here next week. I just want to remind everybody that there still is discount admission tickets on sale at the fairgrounds. Entry for an adult is $7 if you buy it before 5 o'clock on the 26th. Admission at the gate is $9 for an adult. Also, I've been in there and I've helped sell tickets and the carnival wristbands. You can purchase those at the discounted rate of $23 if you purchase them on Tuesday before the fair, at 5 o'clock before the fair opens on Wednesday. And it's about a $5 or $6 savings if you buy them pre the fair opening versus going and buying them out in the carnival lot. So, if you're looking to do a little staycation and take your family member out, take advantage of these discounted admission prices. Last thing I wanted to do, and I sent a little email out, but I also want to pass on thanks. I've been working with code enforcement and PD on some code enforcement issues in the business area off of I Street. I just want to thank them for the extra effort. You know, I believe we have a lot of intelligent people out there working for us and when they all put their heads together, we come up with possible solutions to help mitigate some problems. Because at the end of the day, I'm a big believer in that people should feel safe where they live and work. And I think that's one of the, in the forefront of the jobs that our police department and our code enforcement provide. So, to Sergeant Seha, Commander Reyna, Chief Haddon, Dana Rawls, who works out of the code enforcement office, and then also Officer, Sergeant, Officer Reyes.
Sergeant Reyes.
Sergeant Reyes. They've all been taking a team approach to it and I'm happy with the results and I think that the folks in the area are happy with the results. So, I like to give credit where credit is due and I just, I really like the approach that we're all taking on it. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Could we put Member Silveira's announcement about the drug turn-in to the, on Channel 96? Scott, can you give them that information? We'll do that. Thank you. Mrs. Stonegrove?
Thank you. I don't have anything to report tonight and have a great time at the fair next week.
Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Breezy's absent, so Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. Last week I had the opportunity on Wednesday, the 13th, and the privilege to attend the annual firefighter's annual dinner in Merced. The nine members from our fire department that attended, which was our chief and our assistant chief, we had two recipients that were given awards that night. One was for engineer Mark Frontella, who's been with the department for 24 years, and the other one was volunteer Lieutenant Tom Flynn, who served our community for nine years. So, I want to thank these gentlemen. I want to thank the fire department for the invitation to attend this event. It's my second time attending and it's a wonderful evening to be there and see these gentlemen who serve our community receive their awards from various cities within the county of Merced. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, let me start off with the firefighter's dinner also. This is the first year in all the years a number of us have been on the council that we've been able to attend this dinner because they scheduled it on a Wednesday other than a city council meeting in the city of Los Banos. So, Tim, thank you for changing the date for us. It was a great evening and Mrs. Lewis and I were able to attend and thank you for inviting us and congratulations to Mark and Tom for their awards, too. The jazz concert, May 7th, if you can attend, we have a flyer and please contact Los Banos High School for tickets. And tickets are $20, correct? Okay, they'll have an auction and a great dinner and so, please attend if you can. Now, the vets onsite services center, I believe they said that was tomorrow, is that correct?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the VFW Hall and lunch will be served at 12:00. So, if you are a veteran and you need some assistance with services, please go there, they're able to help. And this, I understand this is kind of a once-a-month thing that they provide, so not only are they taking care of the needs of citizens of Los Banos, but veterans who have served in the armed forces and now may need a little assistance. So, if you can, stop by tomorrow. So, with that, I would, oh, and also, as Mr. Silveira said, the fair is coming up, please attend. It's probably the safest place in the world. I say that every year, so does Mr. Silveira, with all the volunteerism and the police presence there. It's a great family fun five days. So, if you can attend, spend your money locally. It's well worth it. The, let's see, I was gonna say something else, maybe I'll remember after this. Okay, let's go, oh, code enforcement. Code enforcement is kind of, I'm kind of repeating things, but I have to tell you, our code enforcement is fantastic. And chiefs, thank you for what you've done and we are solving problems within Los Banos because I think some people do things and they don't know that there is actually a process to some of the things that they want to accomplish and it's better to ask first instead of beg for forgiveness later. So, code enforcement has done a wonderful job. We're cleaning up some issues that citizens have complained about and if you have an issue, please call the police department, talk to Officer Seha, Jesse Seha at code enforcement and they will be able to help you and guide you. If you're planning some type of event or you're planning some type of addition or something that you need done within the city, code enforcement can guide you. So, please, don't just take it upon yourself. We've had some instances where people have installed illegal buildings and then we'd have to go after and say, you know, that isn't quite right and you need to go through a process for this that could have been avoided. So, code enforcement is not there to punish, they're there to help, but sometimes, you know, individuals just don't want to listen. So, and they're the ones who are the first responders and the ones that have to take the brunt of this and that's not what we want. What we want is for people to ask first and it'll be just a lot easier process. So, chiefs and code enforcement, thank you so much for what you've done. Okay, we have no closed session tonight and it was public employee employment, city manager pursuant to government code section 54957. That is off the agenda. But I would like to adjourn to 8:30 AM, Saturday, April 23rd, 2016, to hold a closed session, public employment. City manager interviews pursuant to government code section 54957 being held at the city hall council chambers, 520 J Street, Los Banos, California. And adjourn to 2:00 PM, Sunday, April 24th, 2016, to hold a closed session, public employment, city manager interviews pursuant to government code section 54957 being held in city hall council chambers, 520 J Street, Los Banos, California. And with that, are there any other comments? I'd like to adjourn at 7:42.